We all rise for him, watch the flag.
It's over there.
It's over there. Over here tonight. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our all.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep my toes. It's always, it's always on that side. All right. Okay. Give the secretary perform a roll call attendance, please. Here.
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 Here. Okay. All the board, all the board members should have received the minutes from the secretary. If there's no questions or concerns, entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay. Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a site plan and special use permit for Chelsea Ridge wastewater treatment plant, amended site plan. Is there anybody here? Should I step up to the podium? Name and...
I'm Cat Johnston from Delaware Engineering. We are working for Don Holmes Management to add tankage and equipment space to the wastewater treatment plant at the Chelsea Ridge apartment.
Excuse me, can you just get closer to the mic?
Smoke, just angle that mic up a little bit.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, you don't have any presentation tonight?
I have, I mean, I have...
Presented to the board?
I have...
You have a flash drive?
I have a, I have plans. You folks have the plans.
Yeah, we do have the plans. It's just kinda...
If we want to put them up.
Go through on the record and you kinda explain what's going with visuals so the board can kinda get a, a better understanding of what you're doing and...
Yep.
We can go from there.
Be promised I didn't have to bring boards and all that stuff.
Yeah. Now, if all you got the flash drive, she can get you onto the laptop and we'll have a little something.
The building wraps around the tanks right now. It sits down on the, down below the apartments, kind of in the woods. And so, what we're doing, the purpose of, the purpose of this expansion is actually, the plant when it was constructed in 2009 had minimal redundancy in it in terms of equipment and also the way the, the flow worked. It would spill into one tank, it would do weird stuff, whatever. We're not expanding the capacity of the plant. We're not changing the speedies permit. There's no intent on, you know, adding more apartments or anything on facility. It's, it's based, it's an upgrade and it's not a cheap upgrade to improve the, the, you know, the redundancy and the longevity of the plant. So, here's a new site plan. If you look on the left in the dash line, which is the area of disturbance, the two smaller rectangles are tanks for MBR units, membrane bioreactors. And then the piece that wraps around the two sides is gonna be a pump gallery. So, there'll be, in this, there's gonna be six new pumps, chemical tank for chlorine for cleaning the membranes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then, we're gonna move the driveway that's, that goes right through where the tanks are, the new tanks are now, just out to the side. And then, the only, we're just, there's gonna be a floor drain in that pump gallery and it's gonna run out down to an existing gravity sewer line that goes down to the southwest on there, to their pump station, and then gets pumped back to this plant. But elevations dictate that we need to have it go around the barn.
Okay. All right. There's just some site details. Any of the board members have any questions regarding the proposal?
No. They look, they okay.
No? Okay.
So, we got comments from CPL last week and so we, we just jumped right on them and adjusted, you know, responded to the comments and adjusted the plans. The comments were not significant, but they were important to go with, you know, a few cat errors and a few things like that.
Yeah.
And, and asked for some structural plans because of the, it's, it's basically a concrete structure. So, the gentleman asked for some structural plans to, because the walls are more than four feet.
Okay.
So, what you see, upper left, one is an elevation from the west. That's an overhead crane structure that is probably not gonna get built. It's just a steel frame because of the cost of it. The one on the right, upper right is, is the existing elevation from, from the east. South elevation, the lower left. So, you can see that the top of this building is about three feet above the existing tanks so it does not, excuse me, you know, it does not go above the existing building.
Okay.
And, and it's just gonna have a flat roof. Basically, I think it's gonna kinda disappear. The way the, the grade runs around the building, up on the north side, it's only gonna be about four feet above grade to the roof. And then we come down and, in the lower left, there you can see a set of double doors. You can walk out of that pump gallery at grade.
So, be primarily below the, below the existing building.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then it was just another structural detail sheet for CPL to take a look at. Shows wall construction and steel in the wall, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
One thing that I would mention in response to comments regarding tree clearing and any trees above a certain size that might be cleared. You mentioned that the vegetation in that area is relatively young and, you know, underbrush and saplings. Would you be able to take a few photographs of that side?
I could, you can't, I actually, my memory said there were no trees that big. So, I stopped there on my way here.
Yeah.
Excuse me. You literally can't really see in there because of the brush, but I can tell you that the largest tree that's in that area of disturbance is probably about six inches in BBH. It's pears and all kinds of underbrush. And literally, in the edge of the existing driveway, you have to peer through to see in there.
Well, I mean, I can, I can swing by before the next meeting and verify this, but if you have photographs, I think that would be even better. The board would be able to see it and we would have it in the record. But that is the only, the only additional material that I...
Yeah, the, the mature trees are back, further back...
Yeah.
Away from where we're gonna, I mean, the area of disturbance includes the new, new construction plus the grading, the driveway and the grading off the driveway.
How far into that brush line would you say that disturbance runs, just for context?
About twenty, twenty, twenty-five feet?
Okay.
Maybe?
From where the existing road ends to where?
Yeah, the, the, the building itself is twenty-three, the whole thing is twenty-three feet, I believe, twenty-four feet. And then...
The road's gonna be same in kind?
It's about sixteen, fifteen, sixteen. We've got it drawn as sixteen feet of driveway next to it and then just, you know, a three-on-one slope to daylight. The roof drains will, there'll be four roof drains on the thing. The roof is gonna, it's gonna be a slight pitch and we're just gonna pipe four separate pipes into the woods and let the sheet flow.
Yeah.
There's no wetlands. We had our, one of our scientists go through and he actually did the survey in there and hacked his way through with a machete and, and said, you know, there's no wetlands in here.
Cause he's picking the thorns out.
Yes, he, he was not a happy camper. I can, I can promise you that.
Well, that, that's it from me. I know that you've responded to John's comments. He'll review your newly submitted plans.
Yep.
And, and we'll take it from there.
So, yeah, so John Bodendorf's not here this evening.
Okay.
So, that's why, yeah.
Somebody's sitting in his seat.
His name, yeah. So, that's, so it's kinda keeping us, you know, from continuing most of the conversation regarding the engineering aspect tonight.
Right.
As John did the initial review. He's probably gotta finish up his review, but at the same time, we did discuss earlier and asked the board that we feel that we need to have a public hearing for this. So, you know, we would, I think the next step was we can set up a public hearing.
Okay.
For, the earliest would be is July 5th.
Okay.
Our next meeting is kinda filled up already.
Yep.
So, July the 5th would be the next one that would be available. I don't know if you feel that you'd be able to, if that, if that's a good date for you. Let's leave it at that.
As far as I know.
Okay.
I'll put it this way, the boss is gonna say it.
Yeah, it's gonna be a Wednesday, it's gonna be a Wednesday, a Monday because of the holiday. So...
Nope, that'll work.
Okay. So, what we'll do at this point is entertain a motion to set the public hearing for July the 5th.
So, motion, okay.
Motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, in the interim, I mean, obviously, once John's back, he's going to probably go through your most recent submission.
Yep.
Get back to you with some comments and hopefully at that point, maybe things, once we have the public hearing, if there's not a lot of, you know, if there's nobody shows up or, you know, there's minimal comments regarding it, we might be able to go ahead and move it to, you know, forward for a resolution of approval.
Okay. One thing, one thing I will make you aware of because your regulations call for Dutchess County Department of Health review. DEC is reviewing this project and I spoke to, in my binder, gentleman from Dutchess County and he said if DEC was reviewing it, he did not need to review it.
Okay. Do you have documentation from the Health Department that stated that?
Uh, it was a phone conversation with him.
Phone conversations.
And, and what it's, we, we've discovered, we worked on this, we're working in Fishkill or whatever, it seems that sewer plants are being reviewed by DEC, collection system stuff, pumps, cause pump stations, stuff like that are reviewed by Dutchess County Department of Health. So, they've kinda found a dividing line.
Okay.
When we did, where we're doing the Village of Fishkill wastewater plant upgrade, that was a DEC review. We've gotten preliminary comments from DEC, but we haven't gotten a formal letter.
Okay.
So, we're, we're hoping that, you know, in, so by July 5th, we may have comments from them, we may have an approval. And, and if we don't have their approval, what we would probably be looking for from you folks if we meet all of your stuff is a conditional approval on, based on DEC.
So, if you have some, if you have any, you know, documentation from DEC, then at this point, maybe it would be a good idea for you to forward it to John to review.
Okay.
Just to see where things were, you know, where you guys stand.
Yeah, there was, there was an email...
Yeah.
From, from somebody from DEC who did some, some basic review.
Yep.
It was some questions that, that the engineer in charge responded to.
Okay.
Very, very basic stuff.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll rely on, on John's opinion based upon what the DEC's called you, you know, so that we can gauge whether or not the, the items that they're looking for are minimal and then again, it could possibly go to a conditional approval, you know, just, you know, the final approval, you can, you know, conditional upon it.
Right. We have to, yeah. Before we can build, we need, we need their approval to, but, you know, that plant is, it's never had any violations or anything, so it's not under consent order.
You're just trying to, trying to be ahead of the, again, be proactive.
Was constructed, as an example, you have two aeration blowers in there and they both run constantly, pretty much constantly. One goes down, you got no backup. So, we're adding a third blower, we're adding an extra pump for each thing, that kinda stuff so that, you know...
Okay.
The, the mechanicals all have backup. So, okay.
Just one quick question.
Sure.
Over the years, there's been some back and forth kinda sketchy talks regarding the town possibly taking over that sewer plant and, you know, expanding it to serve some of the local area beside that complex. Have you guys looked at that in any way?
We have not looked at that. We have not been asked by the owners to do that. Yeah, but it's, it's run by a private...
Right.
Allied pollution control is the operating company that is a contract operator for, for Don Holmes.
I know, I know the elevations are a challenge, so that was...
Yeah.
Kinda one of the things.
Yeah. I mean, it does, it does sit down a little bit of a hole, but by the time you get back off a 90 and whatnot, you'd probably be pumping stuff or whatever.
Okay.
And like I say, it's privately owned, so...
Yeah, there was, I mean, at one point in time, there was some discussion about, you know, potentially the town spending some money to bring sewer down to Chelsea and using that plant, you know, expanding that plant, but...
There is, there is some capacity in the plant still, but how much, I can't tell you. And like I say, I don't, I don't know of any plans or the person we deal with at Don Holmes is, this is for them.
Right, yeah.
So, okay? Any other questions?
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
No? Okay, so we're all good and we'll see you on July the 5th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda this evening is BAC Properties LLC to establish amended site plan.
I'm Bill Polgall, engineer for the applicant, BAC Properties LLC. We're here tonight for an amended site plan on the ten acre parcel, which is on Airport Drive. When you pull onto Airport Drive, it's on the immediate right. You could see the building is way off the road in the back. This was originally part of Dutchess Landscape Supply and was built in around 2001, 2002. So, the site has been developed for over 20 years. As part of the Dutchess Landscape Supply site plan, there was two buildings that were approved, Building One and Building Two. When they built out Dutchess Landscape Supply, they just built Building One with the intention of building, building out Building Two in the future as their business expanded. And that was for like Landscape Supply. With that particular plan, in the, the building that we have, where we're showing it now is exactly where it was and the exact same size that was originally approved by the planning board. The parking lot and the access drives around it are, again, similar to that was originally approved. What we did with this plan is we reduced some of the parking in the front because Dutchess Landscape Supply had some drive miles where a contractor would come in with trailers, go into the building, buy what he needed and pull through. So, with that particular plan and that particular business, going through the years, they never did build Building Two. And this board may recall, we've been back a number of times for almost 18 years for extensions. And when we came back our last time, the board said no more extensions. We want you to come back in for an amended site plan, look into the stormwater, you know, the stormwater management practices, make sure everything is up to the current codes. So, that, that's what leads us back here tonight with the amended site plan. We're looking to get that building to re-approved. Again, the building's the exact same size and configuration as the previous site plan. The parking and the loading docks around it are exactly the way it was on the original site plan except for we've actually reduced the paving area in the front, which is no longer needed because the use is now proposed as contractor's yard and warehouse, which is a permitted use in the airport industry zone. We just got rid of the Landscape Supply use for the building, so we didn't need that. This particular piece of property has a big pond in the front, which is classified as Army Corps and Town Wetlands. When we got the original approval, we did get a wetland disturbance permit from the town to disturb within the buffer. A lot of that had to do with the stormwater management, which is in this area and which has already been built out. And for the front parking to pull the trucks in, which we're actually getting rid of. So, we're actually reducing some of the paving within the buffer that was originally approved. So, we're actually making that condition better with this particular plan. You have a question, Bruce?
No, no, I'm good.
So, the wetland line is about in here?
Yep.
And then the buffer was through here? And then the paving went all the way down?
Down.
So, that's now gonna be grass. It's already grass now and they continue to say grass.
Okay. But all the, all the gray area around the building's gonna be paved or is that gonna be gravel all around?
What I'm showing is it's all gonna be paved.
Okay.
Gray area is the additional paving that we need to do that was never finished in the first place. The rest of this site was all built out. And it was paved up to this point here and then this is storage of equipment right now.
That's gravel right now, right?
It's mostly, it's some gravel, a lot of it's grass actually.
Okay.
And then there's a fence that comes along the front here and everything behind that fence. So, what I'm showing on this plan is just the two highlighted areas are the building that would be built and the parking lot that would be paved and built. The rest of the site will remain as is.
So, that's why we're here tonight. As part of the application, we did go in and update the SWIP to bring that into code. I know John had a number of comments regarding that. I did read through them and I know we can work through those. So, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
That we need, you know, some i's to dot and t's to cross with that, but for the most part, the, you know, stormwater that's in place does work with the new code. The septic system, which is over in this area here, we're not proposing any increase in use that would require us to upgrade the septic system. I know we're gonna need to go to the Health Department to get that confirmed, but we're working within the limits of the septic system that was originally approved. It's, it was originally approved for contractor sales and storage and we're, we're just, I mean, for a landscape supply, a specific business, Landscape Supply, but we're, we're keeping that more general for just a general contractor, which is within the code.
Health Department won't feel there's a need for an increase because you're adding the second building or...
I'm sorry?
You, you don't think the Health Department's gonna ask for an increase with the second building or with the first?
No, because the, the existing building, I mean, the existing septic system as built was designed for both buildings.
For both buildings in the first place.
And it was built, and it was built out in full.
Okay.
With the anticipation that he would build this building. I remember at the time, he just ran out of money to actually put up the second building, but he did all the infrastructure. He actually did a lot of the drainage in that gray area that was all put in when he built out the site. So, a lot of the improvements were already put in place aside from the building and, and the actual parking. The original plan was approved for an individual well, but that's, the board probably knows the county came through and it, you know...
They stole the water line down Airport Drive.
Right, so this, this, this facility is connected to the new water line.
Okay.
So, so water's not an issue.
Okay.
The building itself is gonna match the existing building. It's a beige metal building with a red metal standing seam roof. But ultimately, this is very similar to what was originally approved, minus some paved area for the truck pull-throughs.
All right. Let's open it up to the board. Does anybody on the board have any questions regarding what's being proposed?
How much of an encroachment on the wetland buffer are we looking at now?
This is the buffer line right here.
This goes right up to the building?
And all the drainage is in place and continue to be in place that would divert any runoff to the pond, the stormwater pond, and it would be treated before it's discharged into that pond, the existing pond in the front. So, we cut out approximately forty to fifty feet of paved area where it would encroach in the buffer at its most.
Anybody else? All right. I'll open up to consultants.
Yeah, the only thing that, did, did the original application require a parking waiver? Cause your parking calcs seem to be, you've got one number four required by code and you're proposing... and you're proposing, I think, at least 10 spaces more than that?
Right.
10 to 15, I can't remember off the top of my head, but... So, you would, they would still need a parking waiver?
A parking waiver.
So, you need a parking waiver for being over the code?
Yeah. It is odd, but the way that it is phrased, the parking minimum is also the parking maximum. Any deviation from it would require some kind of waiver.
Gotcha.
How many spots are we looking at, waived, to be waived?
We just got in, he's got an excess of, yeah, he's got more than what's required, so...
I think it's going from...
I have it.
You've got it?
I have it. We're proposing 69, and the code essentially is 49, so it's 20 extra parking spaces. And that has a lot to do with the contractor yard storing, you know, the vans and, you know...
The same is true for your loading bays, right? Your calculations show that in total, the required number of loading bays would be six, and you're proposing 12.
Right.
So, I will double check, but I think that they would also need a waiver for that, to have more loading bays than is required by code.
And ultimately, those, the reason why we're proposing 12 loading bays is we have 12 overhead doors, so, which would be needed for access.
The new building's going to be broken up into multiple units? Or is it just one, the whole building going to be used by one tenant?
Right now, the plan would be for one tenant, but it wouldn't be out of the question if somebody needed half the space that they would look to split it. But the use would be the same. There may be a second or possibly a third tenant.
One other thing that I caught was that, I guess, in the front and along the side of the building, I think that I, when I was counting through in my review, I think that was all 69 spaces that you're proposing, right?
Yeah.
And there also looks next to the loading bays, like in between the loading bays, it looks like there's six parking spaces there. I just wanted you to... Yeah. We'll need to double check that, because if they're not included in the 69, it's now 75.
Right.
I'll check that.
Yeah.
And it's an unlisted action. We want to talk about coordinated or uncoordinated review. If we're doing a coordinated review, we'll want to look at, we'll want to talk about whether or not we want to be lead agency. There's obviously DEC concerns, Army Corps concerns. Health department's probably not going to be an issue. We might want to, we might want to go about a coordinator review. That's it from me. We've already talked about the wetlands at length. A big chunk of the existing parking lot is within the wetland buffer. The existing stormwater detention basin is within the wetland buffer. And then we're also looking at a big chunk of the proposed parking lot in that wetland buffer that, as I pointed out, the wetland buffer goes right up to the front of the building.
And I do want to point out that the site is cleared. It's been cleared for 20 years, so there are no trees that would need to become, you know, that we'd need to remove.
Yeah. Yeah, pretty much the site's been used for, in some way or another. Not that it's a, you know, land that hasn't been touched, more or less. It's, you know, everything's wide open right now.
Actually, the whole, all the subgrade was done originally. So, that's already, it's essentially ready for blacktop.
Okay.
You know, if you go out there...
So, it's more or less gravel on item four?
Right. You'll see catch basins that are now in the grass, because over the years, that grassed in where the parking lot was going to be.
Okay.
Just what, did the, does the, did the use on the existing building change, or is it still the same use?
The existing building is, it's still under the contractor, but there is a small portion of light manufacturing. And that's, the contractor has, it's an electrical contractor, and he bends conduit to electrician spec before they send it out. So, there's a small light industry component to that building, which, again, falls within the AI zone.
You know, the only reason why I'm asking is for, you know, the parking calculations. Because it's like, you know, like contractor yard, I think, has a higher parking count, and warehouse has very, very minimal parking.
Yeah, a lot of this, we did go with the 1,000, one space per 1,000 for warehouse, which kept the number down, given the square footage of the building.
Yes, there's not a lot of need for the, you know, parking. Again, with the nature of the businesses, they're there, you need the additional parking. Okay. So... Okay. So, in terms of this, I guess we, so the recommendation is do a coordinator review, I guess, regarding the...
Circulate intent to be lead agency.
Circulate intent lead agency. Do we, somebody want to make a motion that we circulate intent to be lead agency?
Some move. I'll second that.
Okay, motions made. Say it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any motion carries? Okay. All right. I mean, at this point, it may probably be a little too soon. I mean, it's one of those things, is there neighbors around there? Do they really, do they abut the property on that where the existing building is?
There is residential properties that are behind the existing building through here.
Okay.
And a lot of these are commercial, some residential.
Yeah, those are the ones that are off of 376.
And KMOs.
Yep. Yeah, KMO is one of the buildings, and yeah.
A new gas station is up to the north. They have a residential home on the corner of Airport Drive that has small apartments. They're rentals.
Okay.
That's like old white colonial with some out, small, those are all rentals. I think, then if you go north, there's an empty lot that belongs to Avalon, then KMO, like a couple of small ones, but they would be up towards the back of this, up on the back right side.
Yeah, one of the lots is Avalon Septic.
Right. And it's like two acres.
Yeah. So, the question comes in, should we have a public hearing regarding this? A little discussion by the board, do you feel we need a public hearing for this? Because, I mean, this was a, this was a previous, this was previously approved. I mean, we're kind of going through it again.
I think we can waive the public hearing.
You guys want to waive the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion.
All right, somebody, you're making a motion, waive it?
Yeah, make a motion to waive.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion made, and second it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Okay. I mean, at this point, there's really not a lot, really, we could do at this point.
Right, so what we'll do, what we'll do is address the comments, to come back.
Put it back.
And at that point...
Come back, yeah, we'll come back in once you've, you know, you know, got everything all tidied up. Bring it back. We'll put it on the agenda again, it'll be after the 30 days. And then maybe we'll get some feedback from some of the other agencies, if there's even going to be anything. But we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Have a good night.
Have a good day. All right. So, our next item on the agenda this evening is the architectural review for Mid Hudson Subaru signage.
All right, hi, good evening. My name is Brittany Micheline. I'm here from Lobella Associates, here on behalf of the applicant, who is Mid Hudson Subaru here on Route 9. They have some concerns about the visibility of their current site signage. Last time that we were here, before the board for a review, we were proposing a 25-foot-high sign. Based on the comments that we received from you guys, we reduced the height of the sign and the size of the sign. We still have in the same location that we proposed on the initial application. We just came down in the size. We're now at a, just over 11-foot-high pole height. Still the pylon pole and overall 15 feet high, so...
How high is that over the road grade?
That would be 14 feet over the, well, probably a little less than 14 feet.
So, it's not actually in that, like drainage gully that's there in front? It's up the hill?
Not at the proposed location. So, where it is right now, yes, it's in that depression, so, you know, that's part of their concern, so...
No, 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 I'm talking about the proposed sign.
Yeah, where they, where we're proposing it right now is still at a depression from the elevation of the road by...
But this is finished height? From grade?
This is from, yeah, from grade. Correct.
So, it's 15 feet tall?
15 feet tall from grade.
Correct.
Are you saying the depression is only two feet from the road?
It is about, about two feet.
It looks like a lot more than that.
Is there a reason you're not trying to meet the code at 10 feet at grade? Seeing it's all clear going north or south? There's nothing, there's no trees or bushes in the way?
It, I think, for the applicant, really comes down to the height of the other, of the surrounding signs. Although I don't have documentation of the exact height of those signs, they do appear to be above what's allowed by the code. Again, I just don't have that.
So, just in this general area, the only sign that's above the code is Giggles, which is an existing sign that that height's been there for about 20-plus years. No other sign right there is that tall in that, right in that short vicinity. I mean, if you go west, Route 9, you'll hit BJ's and some others.
Right, by grade you're talking about, right? Like the height of their, of their signs.
That's why we kind of recommended a monument sign at the last meeting.
Yeah. The applicant is definitely not interested in doing a monument sign. They would like to stick with the current sign. I think even use what they currently have. Again, they're just trying to get that little bit of height so that they're not down in the bushes where they currently are, I think is the main issue. Definitely changing the location is going to help a lot. Also, with the other reasons that we had mentioned last time about, you know, safety and cars pulling into the correct lot. But, yeah, it also comes down to the height of the sign and what they're trying to achieve visually.
You have no problem with it? Okay.
I know.
Huh? Well, you do it?
No, I don't.
You don't have a problem?
Nope.
So, at the end of the day, we're looking at, based upon the road itself, Route 9, the height, we're talking from that level going up. Then we're talking probably, say you're down two feet, so you're probably about 13 feet overall height at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
So, if they drop three feet, they're there, right?
The what?
If they drop it three feet, they're there.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we were, I mean, we were discussing earlier. I mean, it was kind of, hold on to 10 foot, it was kind of, you know, we were saying we'd go 10 foot above the road itself, you know, with this type of, you know, with this type of sign. Now, if the applicant is, you know, happy with that, I mean, we could do that. I mean, putting it up that much higher, I don't know how much that's really going to help things with, you have all the wires in the way as well. So, you know, there's all the, you know, when people are coming up the road, they're going to be, you know, the closer they get, they might be looking through the wires to see the sign.
I see what you're saying.
Right, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because I believe that side of the road's got all the, it's got all the electric telephone cable.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is...
You're kind of losing, you're kind of losing it in the, you know, through the, you know, the picture that you submitted to us, you're kind of losing it in the... In the wires, exactly. So, it's almost like it makes sense to drop it, the extra two feet or three feet, so it doesn't get lost up there.
Right.
I don't know, you can call me crazy, but that depression looks way deeper than two feet.
It's right on the edge of it, though.
Yeah, it looks like it's up.
The location, the location on the site plan has it just off of the entrance drive. This is an existing photo, this is where it is right now.
Right.
Yeah. You see that little black bar on the site plan down there?
No, 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 I get it. I get it, I get the visibility is tough with it. And there's no ability to move it closer to the road?
Right now, we meet that 15 feet from the road, and then some. There is a drainage easement that stands in the way, so...
So, you have to stay out of there?
Right.
Okay.
The new locate, the new location is north of the entrance drive.
Correct.
Yes.
So, it's further away from the, I mean, one of the things, or that I've noticed looking at it, is that it's just some very close to the valve.
Yeah, it's way more visible with it.
I understand the rationale was that you wanted to note, you know, inform the people coming north on, knowing that you were coming to the site, but...
Yeah.
Obviously, people were turning, I mean, I've always kind of thought the way those two signs are so close together, that it was a related business, two businesses were related.
Right, yeah.
At least they shared the parking lot, yeah.
Yeah.
The way that it kind of... I mean, I think that if you move the sign back toward the entrance drive, I guess... One question that I had was, was there a reason why it's on the north side rather than the south side of the entrance drive?
There's, I think it, I believe there's another reason or property...
Yeah, if you see the current sign, the farther north they get, the better visibility it gets, for sure.
Because also, right, because the other thing, too, is right now, you know, Valvoline, the driveway at Valvoline is elevated.
It's really high.
And it... I think it obscures the sign as it is, so...
Yeah. Yeah, but by moving it away from Valvoline, by, you know, getting it up there, again, I think everybody's in kind of agreeance that the 10-foot is where we... You know, is what the code is saying. But, again, taking out the account for the, you know, for where it's sitting down in the valley there, you know, in the drainage area, you know, give you that extra distance and go 10 feet above, you know, the road surface itself.
Right.
I think that's... I think that's where the board stands at this point. All right.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we make a motion regarding that, so the...
Exactly what you're...
Yeah, so exactly what we're... So we're all on the same page. We're talking about here with this sign, that the sign is approved as, you know, proposed with the restriction at the height be no higher than 10 feet above Route 9 roadway surface. Correct. Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so you're all set?
Thank you.
Okay, well... Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is Adams of Wapinger's LLC remodel for a conceptual review.
Good evening, all.
David.
I'm Steve Betcher with Adams Fairerter Farms. I'm also here with Ed Klevey with Adams Fairerter Farms, where the construction managers that work for the Adams. And the main objective for tonight would be to get a clear understanding. This is a conceptual presentation to the board. Thank you for listening to this. The idea would be to walk away from tonight with an understanding of next steps in the process for the Adams to do what we're calling a minor renovation. It's in part and scaled because if you've read the letter or the description, it's the interior renovation or remodel that we're after that got us to the point where we need to push out a little bit, which affects the site. So that brings us here tonight with you folks. So, again, we're hoping to explain what we're doing and get a clear understanding of what you folks would like to see next. The Adams are pretty excited to get going on this, as you can imagine. So with that, on the north side of the building, there's some red marks as well as the south side. The red line boxout at the north represents three refrigerated structures, which we would like to move to the exterior wall on the north side, which would be faceted and made to look attractive. That opens up floor space to reconfigure some of our departments. And then on the south side of the building, there is under canopy area that we'd like to utilize and reconfigure some of those areas to increase traffic flow as well as utilize some space that's available there. The takeaway up north with the refrigerated structures would take about seven or eight spots, parking places away. But we'd like to add an additional 23 spots, so there'd be a net gain of about 16 parking places. That would involve moving a fire hydrant. It would involve extending some of the sidewalks in that area as well as some of the curving. So that's the big idea. It's a relatively minor renovation, but if we could get a clear understanding of what will be next for the Adams to move this along, that's what we're after tonight and obviously answer any of your questions.
They don't get delivery trucks on like that south-east side where you're adding the spots, right? Or do they? Because I was just looking at the turnaround there proposed.
Where the nursery area is now?
Yeah, where you extend out that...
The nursery area, that delivery area will just push back more of the nursery. There's a good portion of the nursery that the Adams are not using right now. Just, there's just a lot of extra space there, which allows them to push back some more. Part of what the interior fit up on the building is they want to... The north end of the store inside is very cramped, so they want to move the grocery around to the garden center, where the garden center side is now, and utilize some of the parking there. Right now, most of the people come in and they flock right to the front of the building for parking. They don't know to go toward the back. By putting regular registers in the building, they will learn, we've done this in the other buildings, where they'll learn that they have regular cash registers. They use the secondary entrance, don't find easier parking for them to get people to get into that. So by moving the nursery back, they're not really losing any space as far as the nursery goes.
And the main large truck deliveries are actually on the north side of the building?
Yes, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Great.
Anybody else have any questions?
Everything else looks really good.
Yeah, it seems... I mean, what you're looking to do seems pretty straightforward. I mean, it's...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any of the consultants have any questions? I mean, obviously the...
I mean, the biggest concern whenever I see something like this is, you know, is the change in square footage going to mess with the parking calculations? But they're adding so little square footage and they're adding...
Right, they're netting...
They're probably adding more parking spaces than would be required. So, you know, that's not going to be the issue here.
Yeah, we agree. And even the class of square footage is going to be altered a little bit with the possible mechanical holes. It could either be the net zero, plus or minus addition. But we offered an approximate estimate on the interior, realizing that we're here to talk about site, but your point is all taken.
Yeah, and the turning radius, I mean, the... I'm not a traffic engineer, but we'll have the traffic engineers look at the parking, the reconfigured parking spaces. It looks fine to me, so I don't see any big red flags or anything, so...
Are you anticipating adding any impervious coverage?
Impervious coverage?
There is a little bit more.
Bumping that parking area out?
Basically, about 40 feet gets pushed back into the nursery.
Yeah, what I would recommend, obviously without a full submission, but take a look and make sure that the additional impervious coverage you're adding isn't going to adversely impact your stormwater that you have on the site.
We can have that looked at. I'm pretty sure when we did the original design on this, we had to go through the D E C and all that, the arm, core of engineers and everything. There's like almost as much property that's wetlands and green than there is for impervious coverage, but we can have that checked.
And then what's the square footage of building being added?
Uh, not...
I'm just thinking of it. It would be a type 2, right?
If you're not including the cattle area that you're using for the non-customers, for the coolers, the inside building is not changing. Or underneath the foot, the two red dots down below are right now...
Under canopy, yeah.
Under canopy. The only bump out is on the north side.
So that's not area that you can walk through? That's just mechanical?
Storm, the top deck, it's coolers. And there will be...
For some reason, I thought it was like a walk-in cooler that you could...
From inside.
From the inside of the building.
From the bakery and from the kitchen, from inside. If they're not... customers can't go in there or anything. It's being built on the outside and being closed.
So that would be square footage, then, of the building that doesn't exist, right? I mean...
Yeah.
Not substantial, not a lot, but that would be square footage that is an increase.
Yeah.
710 square feet.
Oh, yeah, so it's definitely type 2.
About 710 feet there. And if the under canopy is considered additional square footage.
It's a good question.
Roughly 500, 600 on the south side and 710 on the north.
To make the space better utilized, we're going to take out... It's hard to see, but this greenhouse in the back here. The first two sections are actually, three sections are hardcover. They contain the garden center. And then you have a big, huge seasonal greenhouse back here, which is like six structures. We're going to take one of those structures out, put a hard roof back on it, and move the garden center down. So most of the space to make the building inside better is coming off of area that they want to utilize for interior space. And then we're going to push the grocery down around the side and then open up the north side where the kitchen is, the bakery, the deli. If anybody goes in there during the daytime, it's crazy to barely get through there. We're going to open up more of that area.
If anything, I think that... I don't think it'll be a red flag for the project. I think that sorting out all of the square footage and how that's changing, we'll need to sort all that out and how that fits into the code. But it's such small square footage. I don't think it'll be an issue. We'll just need to have a very, very detailed narrative on what square footage is coming from where and how that's all shaking out and washed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty much, I mean, it's... I don't think anybody else has any questions, right?
No, no.
That's good.
So, I mean, if we just, you kind of incorporate that into the full submittal, it should be pretty quick. I don't see how it's... Again, this is very minimal in nature.
Yeah.
Just basically updating the current site plan to, you know, to reflect the new numbers, more or less, at the end of the day. We can go from there. Possibly, too, is, you know, just maybe giving us something, you know, in a visual with the coolers, how you're just going to make it, you know, blend in, you know, architecturally with the rest of the building.
We did an addition like this on the Newburg store for the deli.
Okay.
Where we put the coolers outside, we put a full, basically a full brick panel on the thing. Up close, you can tell it's a full panel, but from distance, it looks like just like the brick of the building.
Okay, yeah. All right. Yeah. Roof line, the roof line matches as well, kind of with the rest of the building? The cool... the roof line kind of matches with the rest of the building?
Actually, those...
It comes down?
On that side of the building, there's a small roof that comes down. We probably have pretty much a flat roof on top of the coolers, so it's not going to raise up above the existing roof line that's there. We can almost, that, the cooler pad, almost be flat. They just have a little pitch to put some EPDM, just get the water to run off.
Okay. All right. If nobody else has any other questions, I guess we'll just look forward to getting the full submittal, I guess, at this point.
And that would include, just for clarification, full submittal would include the site?
The items, yeah. The items we're basically talking about tonight. Onto the site plan, just basically amending what you have with the updated numbers, more or less.
Yeah. Just include a really detailed narrative, right? Because you've got a lot of different moving parts. So as much detail in that narrative, in that description, as possible. It'll make everything a lot easier.
And show an architectural of the south side where you're changing the entrance, so they can see what that's going to look like from what it was to what it will be.
Okay. Fair enough.
The existing door, just moving over.
Just show.
We'll just show it.
Just show.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Joey Estates to discuss a conceptual review application.
Hi, Amy, I'm a jury representing Joey Estates. Joey Estates is Azur Bright subdivision. It's 88 single-family homes on 139 acres. There's very few deductions for steep slopes and wetlands on this parcel. The way it's laid out right now, you have about three miles of road, 88 dwelling units, and a large amount of environmental impact to traffic and schools and impervious surfaces.
Okay.
So an alternate layout we have is Cedar Hill Heights, which allows for a cluster subdivision. That's under Section 24019 of the Towns Code. That's the preferred layout we'd like. So we're here representing Joey Estates to try and get a lot count from the board to defer us back to the town board so that they can allow the planning board relief under Section 24019.
Okay. So it is unusual to submit it as a conceptual review for the board to come up with a lot count. Because it's more than just taking and overlaying lot lines onto everything. You know, it's also confirming, you know, if there's any wetland areas, if there's any steep slopes or items like that that need to be netted out, you know, in order to configure the lots. You know, I could look at it, you know, with that, with the topo and say, I don't know. Maybe it's really 44 lots and not 88 lots. You know, but that's just my opinion by just looking at it. Something like that is more something that has to be relied upon, you know, by our consultants to review it, to give us input, to say, yes, you know, this would work at 88 lots. Or, you know, they may come back and say, well, you know, the amount of area that needs to be netted out, it may only be, you know, right now it says 10 acres, but maybe it's 20 acres. It has to be net out of the equation. The other thing that comes into play as well is the, you know, is water on the property. And it's, the health department has to weigh in on that because wells, you know, there's always been issues with wells in that area.
So the submission...
I get where you're coming from, okay? But we're, we're being boxed into something right now.
Well, we had submitted to the town board, asking them...
Right, I understand. I did, you have, whatever's going on with the town board, you know, they haven't given this to us and say, yes, this is something that we have the ability to work with.
Also, the submission that...
And I know Ken, I know Ken's like...
I know, he's trying to cut me off.
He wants to jump right up and talk.
So, but the submission that I, that was submitted showed the calculation for lot reduction based on steep slopes and wetlands. That's in what was submitted to you.
Correct.
So, also, the water situation, there is water. The adjacent parcel is in the water district. The water district has capacity. So we're trying to lay this out, showing that we don't need to rely on the town board to let us into the water district, but they don't really have a reason not to let us in. So thereby, they would be forced, I think, to let us in.
I understand that. And that has nothing to do with us. Yeah, I wish, you know, like I said, it's... Yeah, I wish everybody in town could have public water, you know, because of, you know, there's all different issues. But it's something that's up to the town board to make those decisions, where that gets extended to and where it doesn't. So with that, you know, again, there's, those are just some of the factors that come into play at looking at a subdivision, correct?
Mr. Flower, my name's Kenneth Stenger. I represent the applicant here. And I appreciate the position... I just, look, I appreciate the difficulty of the position you're in. And I'd like you to appreciate the difficulty of the position I'm in. We had an application under Town Law 24050. That application was not heard. Instead, the town board repealed 24050 rather than hear that application. And when they repealed 24050, they said, look, the reason why we're doing this is because we have 24019B. And 24019B will do the goods. Now, 24019B is a pretty short statute. It says that upon a request from an applicant, the town board may, it doesn't say shall, may give your board the authority to disregard zoning forms that pertain to that area in which the application is made. And it further says that in exercising that authority from the town board, this board may not, or may approve a lot layout, but it cannot exceed what would be available... available on that piece of land as is. It doesn't require, doesn't require a secret finding, doesn't require showing a source of funds. You, you look at this, I've done this before, you, you look at that land, you back out wetlands, you back out steep slopes, you back out everything that cannot be developed, and you put a lot count on it. Now, at that point, if you're so, if you're given the authority, no one says you have to do it, but if you're given the authority, you have an opportunity to look at the same number of houses in a different configuration, which will have an entirely different set of impacts on, on the application or, or the impacts on the neighboring environs. And that's, that's what this is about. Because when we went to the town board, we went to the town board, like they said to. And what they said was, we don't know how to use the statute, which I thought was fairly amazing, given the fact that they used it as the reason why they could get rid of 24050. But that's what they said. 60 days ago, they said they'd get back to us and tell us how to do this, having heard a word, written to, one, one request, here, one letter, not a word. So if we can't get that cooperation out of this board, we have no choice but to go with the 88 lot subdivision on an as-of-right basis, do the whole secret, do the whole nine yards. That's why we're here. But we spin on a dime to get out of that 88 conventional lot layout because of the obvious benefits to everybody involved in this town, as well as my client, and doing something that is not conventional. But if this is the only thing I have, because the town board won't give me the magic key to, to maybe get something better, then, then I have no choice but to say to you, here, this is what we're going to do. That's the problem I have, and I apologize.
By that description, it sounds like they don't, you don't need a lot count from us.
Hold on.
No, you do.
You do, hold on.
No, I have the code right here.
Yeah, so what we need, what we need to do here is, I understand exactly what needs to be done.
Sorry to put you in a...
And that's, I understand. But what I'm trying to say is, at the end of the day, before we can even come up with a count, you know, this has to be made, there has to be some type of a submittal made more than just a conceptual review. You're going to have to establish an escrow so that I can have, you know, the engineer and the planner review the proposed subdivision, you know, in terms of the, you know, in terms of the grades, in terms of other things, and also have them produce you a letter that states, you know, these are other items that need to be addressed. If it's, you know, either Department of Health regarding water, or it's things like that, just so that we have some type of concept to figure out.
I would like to start that process.
To come up with that, that number. And I agree that, you know, that could be done. But again, tonight, I think that we're, we're not going to give you, we can't give you a number tonight.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I don't want to give you the impression I was asked for. We just want a place where we can start. We want a place where we might be heard. We want to be a place where there's no politics. That's what we want.
Okay.
And I think that I've watched your board work under tremendously difficult circumstances, and I've watched the way you've handled everyone who come in front of you, and it's a fair shake. It seems like this is a place we could start to get a fair shake. And Mr. Chairman, what you've just described to us, post an escrow, get the professionals together, start talking about how you get to that lot count, that would be a wonderful first step, and we'd like to be able to take it here. Because if the town board says, oh, no, we don't want you to have, we don't want to give 290, I'm sorry, 24019B authority to the planning board, even though they said that's why they got rid of 24050, if they say that, we're still stuck. We're coming back with our conventional.
Right.
And, you know, we're, by the way, it's not a well, it's a community well system.
Right, no, no, I see how that's laid out. And again, you know, we're talking about Department of Health's input too at some point. You know, it's not like they're going to do a full review, but, you know, they're, they're going to take a look at it and say, you know, hey, you know, all right, you know, this might work, or, you know, they might look at it and say, what are you, crazy?
They could.
You know, that's, so those are the things that would have to be addressed, you know, through this process, because again, if you don't have water, you know, how are you going to put houses there?
We would just like to start that process somewhere. We can't get anywhere in front of the town board. So we would like to start here. And, and I, I very much appreciate that we're not looking for a count tonight or a vote. We just want to start someplace.
Okay, all right.
I mean, and we prefer, not Joey Estates, we prefer the small, the project that does the same amount of housing for this town at an affordable price, leaves, leaves open space, and does the things that as a, as a town, we might want, but for politics.
Yeah, and with that submission, you'll submit that as well, at least that conceptual layout for the, the conservation, you know, type subdivision, not subdivision, but it's a, you know, for the apartments.
Not apartments. Not apartments.
Not apartments? Where are they going to be?
They'll be condominiums.
Condominiums?
Yeah, because we can sell them as units. The idea is not that, is to have the same unit count, is to have the same unit count. Condominiums or townhouses can be sold as units, as they are, as opposed to rental properties, which become a single unit, you know, a single multifamily unit.
Right, yeah. All right, and they'll be clustered as the, as is within the statute that says four units per building.
So if, if the board will allow us to deal directly with your professionals, we can start that process and come back with something more meaningful for you to look at the next time we get there. But without coming here tonight, we can't get started.
Well, I think that's the only way we're going to come to a number, is you have to make a full submittal, you know, for this, you know, with the, with the required escrow so that, you know, the staff can look at it, you know, they can take a hard look at it and then come back and say, you know, whether or not this is going to work, or it's not going to work. And then we could start having some discussions about, you know, where we're going to go and how, how we can get to a number. And you can go from there.
As Ken points out, you know, the, the town board can, you know, choose to not grant the application.
Correct, it's, they're doing it on their...
So the lot, but the lot count would work whether, for preliminary plat approval for a conventional?
Yep.
I don't know that you'd have to get some preliminary plat approval.
No, I'm just saying the lot count.
No, 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 we don't, we, yeah, it's basically originally, it just says, in a, through the subdivision process, I was reading it over the weekend, you only have to do that first step. There's that sketch review. That's the part that they have to go through under this. But again, that has the four, there's like four items in there that they have to address, though. There's four different things, which is, you know, again, it nets out all the, you know, all the bad area, you know, and...
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that it, the section doesn't address is, is municipal water and sewer, which, you know, would change the lot count potentially. So, you know, that is...
Wait until we start the process. So that's all we're asking. If you can, we'll leave you alone.
To open up, to open up the discussion, that's fine. I mean, and you can come, you know, we can kind of work through it, but, you know, I understand. It's a, it's a tough piece of property, though. It's not an easy, you know, I've kind of looked at the topography on, you know, parcel access and, you know, even what it submitted. I mean, it's, it's a tough piece of property there. And to, you know, to get the conventional numbers, it, it might be kind of hard to get those numbers with some of those. So, you know, again, I think there's, just be prepared, I think there's going to be some discussion, you know, and the number might not be as high, but it, you know, we'll have to see where, where we pan out.
Thank you very much for hearing us and give us a chance to be heard. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Have a good night. Okay, next item we have on the agenda this evening is Caverly Chapel at Hudson Valley. They're seeking an extension, which will begin June 11th, 2023, and run through June 10th, 2024. Okay, yeah, okay. So motions made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is an extension for the Seek Temple, seeking their fourth extension. On their site plan, it's going to run retroactively from May the 3rd, 2023, through May 2nd, 2024. If nobody has any objections, entertain a motion to approve the extension. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, excuse me. Down to the end of the agenda for the evening. Is there anything else that we want to discuss tonight?
Make the motion close.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.